Perry and Edwards are absent.
Consent agenda, the approval of the town council minutes, February 13th, 2023, regular meeting, January 23rd, 2023, regular meeting, Councilor Perry abstains, absent. Acknowledged receipts and minutes from boards and commissions and committees, zoning board of appeals, one, zoning board of review, one, dog park advisory committee, two, open space and preservation, one. Acknowledged receipts of reports, Treasurer Charette, January 2023, budget and revenue reports. Acknowledged receipts of correspondence, Town of Lincoln in Hopkinton, resolution in support of housing development and land use, historical preservation advisory board letter regarding Samuel J. Russell Hicks' house, letter from Melody Roland regarding zoning crematorium, letter from Ryan LePage regarding zoning crematorium, US Department of Interior invitation to consult on wind farm and revolution, wind export cable project, North Kingston, Rhode Island, letter from Kathy Calabrese regarding North Typhinin, letter from Jean De Souza regarding House Committee on Environment and Natural Resources, letter from Robert Valcart regarding Typhinin Lions Club eyeglass drop box planning board, Miranda, Miranda regarding Lisa and Charles Rose request to abandon portion of Myrtle Way, Assistant Solicitor memorandum regarding Lisa and Charlie Rose request to abandon portion of Myrtle Way. Would any of the council like to take anything from the consent agenda? Councilor Janik?
D nine and D 10.
Councilor Burke?
D one, D three and four and five and six and seven, and then Councilor Janik already took the other two.
So most of D. All right, I'd like to entertain a motion to approve the consent agenda for A, for B, for C, for D two and eight.
Motion moved.
Second.
Motion remains second. Any further discussion? All those in favor? D one, Town of Lincoln in Hopkinton.
D one, I'm just going to suggest that we have the solicitor draft a similar resolution for us. I think it's a good resolution for us to consider. Motion to accept that correspondence, D one.
Do I have a second?
Second.
Motion remains second. Any further discussion? All those in favor? D three. D three and four, I would imagine.
D three, four and actually D six. So my rationale for removing that, and I'm not sure if others want to speak to it, we've had lots of correspondence about various top items that folks don't like around the zoning laws, zoning ordinances, and I just want to respond to some of those, one of those being the proposed crematorium on Main Road. Just want to respond with a couple of things. One, which I said back to folks in email responses, this council cannot weigh in on projects that are before the planning board or the zoning board. They have specific roles and duties that we cannot interfere with, and so those projects are moving forward. I've had some correspondence and I think others about doing some type of moratorium on something, I'm not sure quite what. And even if we decided what that would be, we, it does not stop those projects that are already in the pipeline. Those owners of that property and developers have the right, under state law and I believe federal law, to move forward with the projects that they have proposed. So if anybody feels that they oppose those types of projects, I urge you to express that to the planning board and make sure you come with information and facts, not simply opinion, because the planning board has to make their decisions based on opinion. And then finally, you know, there are folks who seem to think that this council wrote those zoning ordinances. I certainly haven't, I've been on now just over two years, have not addressed the zoning ordinances, and they haven't come to our attention. And I think the other piece that folks need to remember and think about is, when you draft zoning ordinances, you draft it in a way that meets the needs of as many people as possible and protects property rights as well. Doesn't mean I agree with some of the things that may be out there, but if they're permitted under the zoning ordinance right now, then it falls to the planning board to determine what, if any, projects that come to their attention are appropriate. In terms of zoning, we can certainly look at what's permitted and what's not permitted in certain areas. That process takes a while, so I just want to put that out there. I don't know if anybody else has.
On that subject, I was on the board when this was approved, and it was 2014. It was a farm-based zoning, and I just want to make it clear, the town council doesn't just write these ordinances. This was well-vetted throughout zoning, planning, and the planner, the building officials, this was a group that wrote this and came to us with their approval. They wanted us to do this. Some of the people on the planning board right now were present at the time. So there's a misconception that the town council just does this on their own. We don't. We have different boards and commissions that all weigh in when it's something this important, and this is what, and I was here in 2014. I was only here maybe eight, nine months at that point, and this was recommended by the group, by, by all the boards and commissions that weighed in on this. So it is a joint effort. This was not changed in 2018. I've been here since 2012. This has been in existence since 2014. There may be some problems with it, but like Mike explains, once they put their planning board application in, they're grandfathered in. We can change whatever we want right now, and all these projects are already grandfathered in. As far as the developments on Fish Road that's going up, that was also changed around that time, before me, actually. That was, that was commercial, I believe. Now it's residential. These people buy these properties, they know they can build houses, and we can't stop that. How would you like to buy a piece of land and then told, you can't build anything at all on this? So, and that was also done with a group of people. Nothing in this town, very seldom, anything to do with zoning is just one group. It's vetted through several people.
Madam President, no different than any other time with the zoning or planning board, when changes are being proposed, they have numerous public hearings.
Yes.
The public were also invited to those hearings, were allowed to provide input, and at times their input made effect and did make change in whatever the ultimate end product was.
That's what I want to say, too. When I first got on the board in 2012, it was very shortly thereafter that we had several public hearings on this. The committees came and spoke to us. The decision was made a long time afterwards with a lot of questions, with a lot of posters up, with public input. So unfortunately, some people don't agree with it, but we have to look at the whole town and, but I just want to make sure, because I've gotten emails, I've read it on Facebook, that we changed this in 2018. That is absolutely not true. This has been in existence since 2014.
Just one last piece is that when we approved the use of the gambler's money recently, one of the pieces was to set aside money for a redevelopment slash economic development study for the north end of Main Road primarily. So we are taking that to heart. We, I will have a, along with Renee, the Chair of the EDC, we will have a proposal for a committee for that, coming before the council, probably at our very next meeting. And, you know, I see that as an opportunity, maybe not to change zoning, but to look at what do we want to have in that area of town, and how do we go about soliciting the types of businesses that we would like to see up there, and taking a proactive approach instead of waiting to see what somebody decides because they've had the property, or they just bought the property, or they've had the property for years, and they don't want it just sitting there and, you know, them paying taxes on something that they're not able to use effectively. My sense is if we can have a good plan on looking at that area of town and making it a more effective area of town for us and for folks traveling through, I think business owners or prospective business owners will jump at the chance to have that opportunity to put their business there.
And another thing, I'm also hoping that we use some of the casino money this year to hire a consultant to look at our zoning and look at what's wrong and what's right and change it appropriately. And that's also in the works, we've been discussing it. And I think it's well worth spending the casino money to go into every zoning, every zoning law and look to see how we can make it better. Anyone else? You don't?
Yep, so I make a motion to accept the correspondence under items D three, D four, D six.
Do I have a second?
Second.
Motion remains second. Any further discussion? All those in favor? D five.
So that's more of a question, and I don't know if the administrator or the solicitor might know an answer to. So this is correspondence we received from the Department of Interior Bureau of Ocean Energy Management, and it's about the Revolution Wind Farm and the Cable, that project that they have going on, and certainly I've received, and I know my fellow counselors have received lots of correspondence on this matter as well. Have we been approached now to be a party to this? That's what it sounds like, so I don't know that last paragraph.
I don't think we have.
In my view, I don't believe that we have been approached to be a party to this yet. We've been waiting to see some of the results of the other entities that are doing this. I know Little Compton has made a motion to be put forth that that cable go in through Westport instead of down the Skunk River. That's being entertained and weighed right now. I think at some point that the council may want to weigh in as to what its preference would be, but at this stage, I think this is just another federal agency putting their footprint on what their responsibilities are going to be as it relates to this particular project.
No, this actually looks like a different one.
This is United States Department of Interior.
No, but this is coming in at Quonset Point, North Kingston. Yeah, so this is not the same one that I was thinking of. That was the Mayflower one.
So Mayflower is now.
Oh, it is Revolution?
It's changed.
Okay.
A name change, and I believe it is, I'll double check on it, but I believe it is been merged with another one that's now called, it's actually, no, it's called South Coast.
South Coast Wind.
It is South Coast Wind. So I don't know which, Revolution Wind is the one that's furthest south of the seven or eight leases that are out there, is the one closest, I believe, to Little Compton.
Oh.
Looking at the, if you look at figure two, which was attached, this is not near Typhinin.
Yeah, okay.
We were contacted.
I had a hard time reading this.
We were contacted about the other one, I don't know where that, that's still under review.
I actually had the map upside down. Because I had a hard time with this, too.
All right, thank you. Move acceptance of the correspondence under D five.
Do I have a second?
Second.
Motion remains second. All those in favor? Okay, D seven, Councilor Burke.
So this is correspondence from Jean Souza related to the proposal for the oyster farm off of Secana, that sea-powered area. There was a hearing in the State House on Representative Edwards' bill that would require a thousand-foot buffer, if you will, from the median high tide. I guess my question is, Mrs. Souza indicates in here that there was testimony from the brothers who are trying to put the oyster farm there, that they plan to sell near their farm, and didn't we identify that you can't do sales in that area?
So from my understanding of zoning, that it's a residential area, that they would be precluded from opening up a business there. I don't know what the term "near" means. I do know that they acquire some of the land locally in Little Compton, that I don't know if that would be a site that they would be considering to sell, that would be considered near. They've also testified that they want to bring the materials from, they don't want to be a thousand feet away, they want to be closer so they can walk it across the beach. And I believe that that was also something that CRMC would have an issue with, and I think it's something the town definitely had an issue with of destroying the beachheads by doing commercial activity across the beach. That it was our understanding that CRMC and the state were going to try to legislate it, that if they were going to commercial fish, they had to take it to a commercial port or a commercial ramp, and that they would not be allowed to take it across the beach. And in talking to Representative Edwards, he was also wondering, and it's something that we can bring up probably through memorandum among the council members, but I think he's looking for a resolution of support from the council. That's something we can work through.
I'd be fine with that, having us put together a resolution, I don't know about my, yeah, and whichever the Senate counterpart is.
He did tell me he does have a Senate counterpart.
Yeah, I know there is one.
Senate Department. I can get those numbers and get them to, Solicitor to.
So they also do own a small, very small spit of land.
It is a residential piece of property.
Yes, okay. So we're, and they have been told that that's a residential property that?
They know it, they can seek a zoning certificate, they'll be definitely told.
Okay.
Can you make a comment on this?
Sure.
So when this first started many months ago, if I recall, they were, they never had expressed any desire to beach oysters on the shore in Typhinin. They were going to take them somewhere else. It was only after they bought that little piece of property for a hundred grand that they suddenly started coming up. One opportunity for them may be the Chase Marina Building, depending on what happens there.
So the Chase Marina Building is under a review by DEM as to how that's going to be utilized. They've received a number of different proposals. I have not seen any of them, I have not weighed in on any of those. I do think it would be a good thing to bring that entity back to what it was in the past, but that's up to DEM as to how that, and it's going to be years before that ever gets renovated and brought back to fruition.
Yeah, so there was a hearing, Representative Edwards made a spiel, there was a lot of witnesses, and it's gone to another committee or whatever.
It's going to a committee hearing.
Yeah, so it was helped for further study.
So it was helped for further study, Jay, and what happens usually is before the first break in February, they do that, and then they'll come back, finish any hearings, and then they'll come back after the second break and start.
So it's a continued hearing?
Yeah.
So the other aspect of that is CRMC has not ruled on that license yet for that oyster farm, still being weighed by CRMC.
Okay.
Move acceptance of the correspondence under D seven.
And we're going to have the solicitor.
And the solicitor will draft.
A resolution.
A resolution for us for those bills.
I'll second.
Motion remains second. Any further discussion? All those in favor? D nine and 10, Deb.
So we can take those together. The roses, Lisa and Charles Rose, they did come before us somewhat recently about this, request to abandon the portion of Myrtle Way. It seemed pretty easy at the time when we did send them to the planning board, so apparently it's not as simple as we thought.
Never is.
My question really is, because it's saying, the planning board made a motion that they recommend to the council that we abandon this section of Myrtle Way and, you know, all these areas that are but, making sure that everything that they think is happening will happen. So are we kind of in a wait and see? We're not voting on this.
No, we're not.
Following the, following that recommendation, there's a memo in your packet from the Assistant Solicitor?
There's quite a memo.
So he, he opined that there's nothing for us to abandon because we've never accepted that street into the, it's not, it's not a dedicated street.
Right, but are we, did he suggest that we then accept it? No.
No, I don't think so.
Well, he actually in.
I don't think he did.
It's a roundabout suggestion. And I have to find it.
It does go round and round.
What I understood from him was that it was owned by all the butters.
Correct.
And then it's not ours, so all the, but are all the butters the same person?
Part of, lots, 158, 159, I think, but I don't know about 160. 62, yeah.
So it's very similar to Soddy Pond where it's not ours, so they have to come to agreement what to do with this.
Correct, I think they would have to get the agreement of 157 and 153 as well, too, because that's technically owned. They have a common interest in the entire roadway, not just that part that's in front of their houses, so. The recommendation was to abandon that road by the planning board, subject to the town coming to a conclusion that it was dedicated to the town. Further research based upon the memo indicated that it was never dedicated to the town in any way, never paved, never used as a right-of-way, whatever. So there's really nothing for us to do, it's really up to now the landowner to figure.
So it is like Soddy Pond?
Yes, exactly like Soddy Pond. Todd has become an expert in these roadway searches. I give him a lot of credit, he does put a nice memo together with a lot of maps, but.
Well, he did go roundabout, but, but I talked to Todd myself. Or maybe I talked to you.
These issues are not really, you know, as clear, you know, clear, I mean.
No, no, but I think what I got from it is this is another Soddy Pond issue.
So there's really nothing I can do, and so, I believe it's that. Nothing we can abandon because we don't own it.
Little convoluted, but.
So we don't vote?
They could, they could abandon it, that's correct.
Okay.
So I'll make a motion that we accept D nine and 10.
Any further discussion? All those in favor? Do I have a public comment? No, right? Okay. Public hearing, discussion, possible vote, approval of proposed amendment to the Typhinin Code of Ordinances, Chapter Two Administration, Article Five, Finance Division for Typhinin, School Department Capital Improvement Revolving Fund. So we went over this and we tweaked it a little bit the last time, I believe. Would anyone like to speak on it? Any comments regarding it?
The only, the only comment I'll make is, during my time on the Budget Committee, I had always thought this would be a good way to go, and we finally got a consensus of that.
So I just want to make sure, and I think I'm right, this fund will be in this, this money will be in this fund, but cannot be spent without town council approval. Absolutely no doubts.
Does the town council show priorities of approved projects?
I saw that, just want to make sure.
And the board will succeed.
And we have oversight.
I want to thank the Treasurer and Administrator for helping me craft this, to, for the experts as far as reserve funds and whatnot.
And I'll explain it to the public if, if someone has not heard about this. When we do projects for the school department and give the money, they get reimbursement from RIDE, especially if it has to do with safety and health. Sometimes it's 30 to 40 percent. This is normally going into the general fund. What we thought, what we should do is put that back into more projects for the school committee, for the school department, so that the taxpayers aren't being taxed for these projects. This will be earmarked just for the many projects that they have wanted in their capital, their five-year capital plan. So it's a way to get a lot of things done without taxing the people. So this is what, we, we had talked about this for a few years. Like Jay said, the Budget Committee tried to do this at one point, and we decided this year, because a lot of the money they're using right now is casino money, too. So is the casino money working for us also? They're spending money, they're spending the casino money, and we're getting 30 to 40 percent back in reimbursement, so it's more projects we can work on.
So, Michael, I just do have one concern. I'm looking at Management and Procedures, C. Well, it says that council shall prioritize the approved project. I don't see language, and maybe I missed it. A, town council after consultation with town ministry and schools shall review and approve by resolution. Thank you, I did read that, and I missed it.
That's why I asked specifically, because I read C, and I read A, but I just want to make sure.
I read it the other day, and I missed it today.
It's very, very clear. So that's, that's what we're doing, that we think it's a great idea.
Many towns do this as well.
Yeah.
It's just a way of creating a fund from the reimbursement to go back continually to schools, it's a good, good program.
And I also look at is casino money working for us also, because we're making more money on the casino money.
Keeps on earning reimbursement.
Correct.
Time after time after time.
Right.
So just for complete transparency, and so that people can understand, there is housing that we do receive every year, but it goes towards when we build those new buildings, that the bonded indebtedness that was created because of that, that those housing reimbursements come to offset that debt.
Right.
So they, that money does go to the general fund.
Right, but that's a whole different.
And I just, so people can say, well, why doesn't that money go? Because then we would have to appropriate tax people.
And that's excluded from this.
It is totally excluded.
This has to do with RIDE giving us percentages back, and we thought it was a great idea to put it back into the schools. So that's, that's what.
So for instance, just to, so if you appropriate $100,000 from casino revenue to the schools for.
$2 million last year.
I'm just making up.
Okay, just want to make that clear.
I can't be, I'm not good at math, so.
Okay.
So, $100,000, $100,000, $100,000 for the schools for the casino revenue, and they get an approved project from RIDE, assuming that the reimbursement rate would be 34%. We would get $34,000 back from that. So you just made $134,000, and that money normally would go to the general fund, but now that $34,000 is going to go back to the schools for us to use. So if we appropriate $34,000 for another project, we'll get a third of that. So it keeps on going around and around, that's why they call it a revolving fund.
It's like it's done, but a third of a dollar.
A third of a dollar. But it's a good, it is a good, a lot of towns have done this to make sure that, you know, funds get replenished, and you can always have a capital fund for schools.
And this will be for capital, by the way. This is all for capital expenses.
It's high as 50%.
Yeah. And Jay's right, there's, there's certain ones that are 50%, so that's really a good deal. Any questions from the council? Concerns?
I think that this was well-received by the school committee because they would get their money reimbursed and it would go into the general fund, so they were always kind of starting at the beginning. So this, at least they have a little pot to start with, and then whatever we can add to it. You know, they do have some money in that, in that pot. And we did it on the municipal side, too, because when we had, our police chief was able to get us so much money for vehicles, that money that came back did go into that capital reserve fund, so we already had it on that side of the budget, so this just kind of mirrors it, and, and I think it's good. I think it's good transparency, and I think it's, it's good for the schools.
Okay, so at this point, I'd like to open up the public hearing for comment. Does anyone want to comment or ask questions regarding this? Anyone? Okay, I'll close the public hearing and call for a vote.
I move, motion, we approve the ordinance before us related to the Typhinin School Department Capital Improvement Revolving Fund.
Before you do that, can we just have a, just for memorialization purpose, who, who technically introduced this ordinance? Was it the entire council?
I think, right, or was it you?
Or Mike?
We all, we all worked on it.
We all worked on it, but I just want to make sure, I usually, as a.
I think it came out of the. I think it came out of the gaming revenue committee, so why don't we put that committee?
Okay, well, it's going to introduce by council member.
Okay, me. I'm trying to give credit where it's due.
So we need to have somebody blame, right?
Yes.
Yeah, if this doesn't work out, it's Councilor Burke, you can call. He loves your emails and calls. So I have a motion, and I think I have a second.
You have a second.
Okay, all those in favor? Okay. Water licensing. Meredith Bauer, Tiburon Farmers Market. Our request and special event permit for Art and Garden Show on Saturday, June 17, 10 to 3 at 3852 Main Road, continued from 2/13/2023. So the last time we met, we were concerned about your parking.
Yes.
And you have news for us.
Yes.
I don't see it on here, though.
I have the letter from Jimmy Holland about renting that or using that extra lot down across from the Mill Pond Shops.
Yep, and we've and we, but you've used other people have used that before.
Yep, so he showed me, I have a little layout map. He showed me how the traffic should go in and out, where the lane should be set, where the volunteers should send. So I'm going to meet with Chief Jones, we're supposed to meet today, about the flow of traffic, where the volunteers should sit, and having.
Detail.
Detail where that should.
Because usually what they did was had a detail at that lot. He's shaking his head, I'm right. Yeah, I've been here a while. And they cross everybody there, so it works out really good, because then they're walking down that way.
Because there's no sidewalks down there, so.
Right. And you're going to meet with Chief Jones. Any further questions? How many cars, I'm sorry, how many cars?
I don't know that number, but just from doing like a Google.
There's a lot.
It was a lot, it was a couple hundred.
Yeah. Councilor Burke?
Meredith, I know you said at the last meeting that this list is just a possible list.
Yeah.
I guess my question is, because we don't allow farmers markets in that area. There's only certain areas that we can allow farmers markets. We changed the ordinance to allow it on town property. How will this differ from one of the farmers markets?
It's kind of a gray area, but there will be no food sold. There'll be no food made there or cooked or anything like that. It'll be strictly businesses that are artists and businesses that are garden shops, I guess you could say.
So if I am if I am a farmer, I'm not going to bring my produce there.
Correct, I mean, they'll bring herbs and plants and flowers, but it won't be fresh vegetables.
I'm not going to bring my frozen meat or anything like that there.
Nally Farms won't have their.
Who?
Nally.
I just threw a list together, I haven't even sent out an application yet, so.
This is generally a lot of the people that are at your.
Yeah, it's a typical vendor list, but not indicative of who may come, because this is the first time I've done it.
Allowed to be a wet blanket.
But.
But. I see, for instance, movement ground farm lamb, chicken, eggs, and vegetables.
Right, like I said, it's just I just took my vendor list that I have for the farmers market, threw it on there. I haven't sent out a vendor application or anything, I haven't recruited for anybody or anything.
So you're going to tell them what they can and can't bring.
I will, it's a curated show, so I choose who comes and who doesn't, so they don't just show up.
And you understand our concern.
Oh, yeah, yep, yep.
Yeah, because we have to be careful, because we do not allow farmers markets down in that area. And you know what we've been through. And the new ordinance where we changed it a little bit, but.
What's the town Tuesday?
Remember that?
I do. Just about three years ago.
I could not understand for the life of me why you could only do it.
Do you want this, it's just a little.
Yeah, could we have a copy of that?
Give it to the clerk.
Yeah, give it to the clerk. Do you have another copy for the?
Yeah, it's electronics.
Okay, perfect. Any questions from any of the councillors?
Do you need a copy of the letter from Jim Holland?
Yes, please. What else do we need? Can you think of anything else we need? We have everything else in here.
Timeline, location, detail.
Yeah, we have everything else in here.
The only thing I can't change is the weather.
Any, any, any questions from the council? I'd like to entertain a motion.
A second.
Oh, we have to make one, you want to make one, you can make one.
Sorry.
All right, I'll make a motion now.
You really should make a motion.
We approve, we approve the Art and Garden Show for June 17, 2023, from 10:00 AM to 3:00 PM at 3852 Main Road, with subject to meeting all legal requirements.
No, Dennis.
Go ahead, Dennis. Motion's been made in second, any further discussion?
Do we just, do we need to add in rain date?
Oh, is there a rain date?
There's a rain date of June 24.
With with the rain date of June 24.
On here.
I missed that.
Consistent with the application.
Consistent with the application.
And Dennis, you'll second that?
I'll second that, of course.
All those in favor? Perfect.
Thank you.
All right, so we're going to put B, C, and D. Well, we're going to talk to the the building official, I feel like deja vu every time this comes up. 7B Town Administrator Discussion, Possible Vote to Approve Mobile Home Park License Renewal for Datsun Home Owners Association, DBA, Datsun Mobile Estates, 301 Bookhamash Road, beyond limited three months. So we limited this for three months, the three months is over, you're suggesting less than three months.
I am, I'm suggesting probably another two months, based on John's input.
Specifically for Datsun? Yeah, so we are in communication with the engineers, Northeast Engineering, who's working with DEM on rectifying the situation relative to the septic systems on site. I spoke with a woman named Lynn earlier, who indicated they are finalizing paperwork at this time, that the work is done. So they should be providing us with what they call certificate of conformance documentation, saying the septic systems are installed properly and working. That will be followed up at some point with.
Did they put new?
They put three new units in.
Okay, I wasn't aware of that, okay.
Two of them serve two units themselves, so we're talking about five units that that have been. There are still some other outstanding issues, however, they are at a balance right now with DEM. We do see that they are making progress and the.
Which is the best we've done in a long time.
Really?
Okay.
Take credit.
We'll keep it rolling, because I am.
Keep the pressure on.
Yeah, because we can't shut them down, because all those people have nowhere to go. We'll have to house them, yes, so. So you're suggesting about two more months and we can review it again?
Hopefully we'll get the little conformance by then and put it to bed.
But there'll be other issues we'll have to keep watching.
So there are some, there's an issue right now with an older trailer that is dilapidated, that has some back taxes. John's working with the developer development to have that destroyed, taken off the property, but we're going to put a letter together that they can't put another trailer on there until the back taxes are paid. That way it gets rid of the safety hazard. And there are a couple of other minor issues that are floating around out there that that we're working.
But two months from now, we'll we'll have another update.
But we also require that in addition to that, the septic system that serves that lot has to meet all current standards.
Well, it would be at the time, but right now it's it's not failing. It's actually one of the higher points on the development.
The trailer's not good, but the septic works.
The trailer's a bottom hole, it needs to come down.
Do they have, they have a separate septic for each unit?
For the most part, I would say yes, they were cesspools, these agents were holding this on the ground. Over time, I don't have a full coalition, I mean, it's close to 100 sites on that property. There have there have been some changes and modifications. What brought this to a head was the violation notices from the Department of Environmental Management. So DEM said, you got to you got to take care of these first and foremost. I have to assume that they had gone around and surveyed the rest of the property and not identified anything that was of immediate concern to them. But as we come along on these individual lots, we will be paying attention to those things. Just mention something quickly on when we remove an old structure like the one that is dilapidated up on the hill there. There is, there are some provisions in the building code that will stipulate that in order for them to put a new structure aside from getting the taxes, current, the property taxes on the town level here, we would have to certify that the septic system is in fact going to be approved by the RID, for its current state. And if they can't come up with that approval, then they don't get their.
So if it's an existing cesspool, it will not be able to be utilized when they put a new trailer on it?
Because it has to be septic, right?
It does.
So who's responsible for that? Is it the the park itself or the individual person?
Well, it would be the park as a whole, because it is one piece of property. So the owner of the property as a whole is responsible for what happens on that. Whoever they convey that requirement to, or the authority to take care of that is a different matter. But it is the park as a whole.
So the person who comes in with their trailer, do they rent that?
They rent the space, they lease the space, yes.
There's properties like that all over the place. Unstaffed Road.
Yeah, we're going to be talking about them.
There's some of those, too.
I don't know about those.
Yeah, there's some at Staffed Pond, too.
Was it way in the back?
They rent, there's rental houses on it, but they rent the land. And they own the houses.
I know where you're speaking.
You know what I'm talking about, a root of late, somewhere down that way, yeah. All right, so I need a motion to approve the extension. And Mike, just that that'll be till April 30.
Through April 30, so May 1st, they're no good.
This is just for Datsun, right?
That's just for Datsun.
Just for Datsun. Do I have a motion?
So moved.
Second.
Motion's been made in second, any further discussion? All those in favor? Town Administrator Discussion and Possible Vote to Approve Mobile Home Park License Renewal for Heritage.
So Heritage is the one on Main Road, correct?
Yes.
That one has, doesn't have septic issues, it has the same issue with trailers that need to come out there.
There was one that needs to be removed. And after speaking with the Anna, who's the management of the corporation, that is a structure that's in contention between the former owner and somebody that supposedly purchased it. But that's a monetary issue. We're more concerned about the same situation where there is a dilapidated structure that needs to come down. Anna did agree to the terms that I gave her verbally, which we will have in writing at some point, that that trailer will be removed because it is a danger. It does it does pose a danger according to the minimum housing codes. And that if there is any taxes owed, that before a new structure will be placed there, that those taxes will also be brought up in current.
So how does it sound that we do the same thing? Come back through April 30th? So as of May 1st, we need some kind of an answer.
I would agree.
Or some kind of update.
Well, an update for sure, but hopefully some.
So I move approval of the extension of the license for Heritage Home Park Cooperative at 100 Heritage Park through April 30th of 2023.
Second.
Motion remain second, any further discussion? All those in favor? Town Administrator Discussion, Possible Vote to Approve Mobile Home Park License Renewal for Patchett Brook, 4502, so this is also on Main Road.
This is way down by the town line at Little Compton.
Oh, okay.
The old Windmill Hill walking the road.
Yep, I know where you're talking about.
So this one, we really have really no issues at this point with?
We don't.
So that can be approved in full for the year.
Okay, any questions? Good job, you're making some progress at least.
We're trying.
Okay, I like, a motion, please.
Move approval of the renewal of the license for the full renewal period for the rest of 2023, right? Or is it through?
Through November, correct.
Through November? Through November 30th of 2023 for Patchett Brook, Patchett Brook Park Incorporated at 4502 Main Road.
Second.
Motion may make in second, any further discussion? All those in favor? Thank you.
Thank you.
Thanks.
Appointments and resignations, I agree. Asian Commission, seven-member board, three-year term, one vacancy. Gary Monahan, 67 Tanglewood Drive, request appointment, term ending 4/15/2024. Is Gary here? I got a text today saying you're a good man for this job. I did.
I did, too.
Yeah.
Were they related to him?
No, no, I don't think so, anyway. So Gary, tell us a little bit about yourself and why you would like to do this.
I'm Gary Monahan of the 67 Tanglewood Drive. Reside there with my wife and my son Nicholas. Been involved with youth sports here in town for well over 20 years. 30 years even outside of here. I recently came back to Tiburon by about 2014. Grew up here in Tiburon, graduated in 84, went off to join the Navy for four years. And I was back with my parents for a bit then, and eventually got married, bought a house outs where again I'm back, so. Recreation, where my son is now 14, he's kind of aged out of youth sports. Always try to instill in him to give back to the community. And I've used the Rec Commission, he's done beach cleanup at least every, every week throughout the summer. He volunteers at the Chunk of Treats or at the parades. And it's always something I had a passion for as well. I think the Tiburon's biggest assets are the recreation sites as well as the beachfront. And I don't, I think we're going in a great direction right now with the Recreation Commission. But I like to see those those beachfronts utilized even more. I just think they're maybe slightly unutilized. And hopefully I can bring something to the team and offer some ideas and call them forward, so.
Thank you. Any questions?
No, but he did four years in the Navy, so I know he's a good guy.
That's assuming he's a good guy. Any other questions from anyone?
No, I just want to say, though, I remember you from basketball. So I know you've been involved in the town sports for a long time. And I think it's great that you're stepping into recreation. It's a great commission, they do a lot of work, they work hard. And I think you'll fit in really well with them.
I'm excited to be part of this.
Okay, so there's one vacancy and one person applying, so we can waive our policy if we want. And I'd like to entertain a motion.
Make a motion to waive our policy?
Motion's been made in second, all those in favor? Any further questions for Gary? I'd like to entertain a motion then.
I move that we appoint Gary Monahan to the Recreation Commission for a term to expire, let me get this right, on 4/15/24. Am I correct?
Yes.
Well, second?
Motion's been made in second. Any further discussion? All those in favor? Welcome aboard.
Welcome.
Thank you, Gary.
Thank you. Open Space and Land Preservation Commission. It's a nine-member board, three-year term, one vacancy. Jonathan Miguel Klinker, 38 April Lane, request appointment, term ending 4/15/2023. Is Jonathan here? I thought that was you. Welcome, Jonathan. Just tell us a little bit about yourself and why you'd like to be on this committee.
Sure, I'm Jonathan Klinker, I live over on April Lane. I'm a lifelong Tiburon resident. I've done a lot of work in both here locally and throughout the US in sort of land preservation and trail maintenance with the Boy Scouts. I'm an Eagle Scout out of Troop 4218.
Good for you.
Here in Tiburon. Thank you. We've done with the Boy Scouts, I've helped work on the Dry Tortugas National Park, the Quidico National Park Provincial Park in Canada. I did a two-week trail slash canoe trip up in there a couple summers ago. And sort of I've always talked about sort of serving on some kind of town committee in a capacity to sort of give back, because I've always enjoyed our open spaces and environment since I was little. And just kind of want to help to give and preserve that and expand it in any way going forward.
And you're in law school right now?
Yes.
I just noticed that, congratulations.
Thank you.
At Roger Williams?
Yes.
Any questions for Jonathan?
I don't have a question, but I have, I just want to say I am gratified to see a younger person in town interested in joining one of these commissions. And who knows, you may want to join more, or you might want to sit here. But it's a good starting point, and I appreciate you putting your hat around.
Thank you.
And I would just like, your resume is so impressive, like you just. And I would just like, your resume is so impressive, like you just, you are so busy. But I think that you have such great experience, such great background, that you can bring so much to our town and to this commission too, to this committee. So thank you for putting your hat into that.
Thank you.
Cuz of Burke?
I want to echo my colleagues with that. And I really do congratulate you on your Eagle Scout, that's a hard achievement. You definitely need to be proud of that. I was going to pose this as a question, but I'll just make it as a statement. I am hopeful that this commission start looking much more assertively at what can be done at the north end of town in terms of open space. It's badly needed up there. There are some, and I know that there have been efforts with some landowners up there and they're not always easy to get to. But having some open space up there also I think would help address some of the issues that people have raised to us. And a lot of town live is up there and it would be walkable for them. So, and when I talk about open space up there, I'm really not talking about passive open space like a conservation easement. I'm talking about active open space that has trails and the like that people can make use of and recreate and go sit in a park for a little bit with their kids and things like that, so. Thank you very much for coming forward.
Thank you.
Anyone else? Okay, so we'll have to make a motion to waive our policy and appoint this evening?
I make a motion that we waive our policy.
Do I have a second?
Second.
Motion being made in second, all those in favor? Another motion, please, for Jonathan.
I move that we appoint Jonathan Klinker to the Open Space and Land Preservation Commission for a term to expire 4/15/20, that can't be right.
Is that right, 23?
Because someone left.
Oh, okay. So you'll be, need to go back before.
You'll be back in a year.
No, in a month or two.
In about two months. That's why I said this can't be right.
I wasn't looking at it, yeah, you'll be back? Don't worry, it'll be easy. You'll either be back or not be back. If you don't like. All right, so I have a motion in second.
Deb, I think.
Deb, did you second it?
Yes, she did.
Did I?
Yeah, I thought I heard you say it, but maybe I'm wrong.
I'll second.
Thank you.
She wasn't forced into it, I think. Motion's been made in second, all those in favor? Thank you Jonathan, welcome.
Thank you Jonathan.
Economic Development Commission, a five-member board, four-year term, one vacancy. Dean B. Holt, 333 Village Road, request appointment, term ending 7/15/2024. I also knew that was you because you were sitting near Renee. And Renee has a way of recruiting people to join her.
She's pretty good at that.
Yeah, she's very good at that. Tell us a little bit about yourself and why you would like to be on this committee.
It's pretty simple, I'm retired, so I have a little time to potentially give something to the town. I know Renee and as you say, she's a good recruiter. I went through a couple of her meetings, saw the people that were on the committee currently. Feel like I could be compatible and work with those people. The hope is that I would have my experience in primarily.
Yeah, I noticed you have a lot of.
Real estate related, all aspects of real estate and private side, public side and in development from sort of concept to the completion and all the steps in between. So hopefully, hopefully that experience is either directly or obliquely useful.
I think it'd be very helpful when I read this.
The objectives of the committee.
Any questions, Mike?
Not a question, Dean, I appreciate that you came forward. I've had the privilege to be at a couple of meetings with you and your input is insightful, helpful. I do think that you'll be an asset to not only that commission, but to the town as a whole in that role. There are some projects that we've talked about coming up that I think you will be definitely a benefit for some of those projects. So I very much appreciate you being here tonight.
Thank you.
Anyone else? I just, I'm excited that you have such a great background. I think you'll be great on the EDC Historical Preservation, may pull some of your ideas also. But I know Renee will benefit from you and so will we all.
Great.
Thank you.
Okay, same thing, we'll have to waive our policy.
I move that we waive our policy.
Second.
Motion being made in second, all those in favor? Another motion, please.
Like to make a motion that we appoint Dean B. Holt of 333 Village Road to the vacancy position on the Economic Development Commission for a term ending 7/15/2024.
Second.
Have a motion in the second, all those in favor? Thank you, welcome.
Thank you.
I'm very excited that people are starting to volunteer because we're. It's a very good thing, isn't it? Anyone out there that wants to join something else, just go talk to them.
It's so great. It's so great to see new faces too and new ideas.
All right, Police Chief Jones, discussion possible vote on resolution regarding establishing a new committee for new safety complex feasibility study.
Good evening, sir.
Good evening. So I believe as part of your backup in the package, I want to thank the Solicitor's Office for putting together the official resolution for your review based on the conversation that we had the last meeting about forming a Public Safety Committee. So in reviewing it, I feel that it satisfies the needs, the timelines are good. I will say just publicly that we've gotten a tremendous amount of support and interest from the community. So we want that to keep happening, even if we only select, obviously based on the resolution, a certain number of residents. These are public meetings, so I think public input from anyone and everyone is going to be important in this project.
No, that's great, that's good to hear. I have one question for the Solicitor.
I have one typo, I need to fix it.
What's your typo?
Let's see, the last bullet, non-resident members have, this should be of the committee. Non-resident members of the committee shall be ex officio non-voting members.
Okay.
I'll just change that have to an of, please.
And then also on that bullet, I just. Why would a non-voting member be able to vote on minutes?
Just because they're official minutes and they were participating in the meeting, so.
I guess I've never seen that. If I'm a non-voting member, I'm a non-voting member.
Well, not voting for substantive stuff, but voting on minutes proving that this is what happened at the meeting.
The correction of the minutes.
Okay, I mean, that's different for me. Anybody have any?
Maybe you can get rid of it, I just put it in. Probably had a problem with the Charter Commission having people to vote on minutes sometimes.
I'll just make the comment that we should not be surprised if the August first date slides. That's what happened to me with the Solar Committee, partly because we had a hard time getting people. This may be different, I don't know, but. Don't be surprised.
So, and just so we're clear, the individuals who are not town residents right now, are the administrator, the fire chief, fire marshal, and that's it?
Yes.
This should be it.
Okay.
They won't be voting members.
Right.
So how many members would they, but how many members would this be voting?
One, two, three, eight. No, voting, eight, there'd be eight.
One.
Five electors.
Five plus VPW, six.
So we need one, we need, we probably need an odd number.
I mean, we could, I'm not always.
You work off of consensus. And if you can't get to consensus, then they come to us and they say we can't get to consensus.
That's what he wanted to say.
It's advisory.
I know, it's just we normally do it that way, but, all right.
And who knows, maybe the fire chief will move to Tibbeton.
I don't think so. The fire marshal's come and gone though.
That's true.
He may come back. All right, any other questions?
We'll have to put on a future agenda who the council member is because that's not before us tonight, right? Make a motion to approve the resolution establishing the Tibbeton Public Safety Complex Committee as it is before us with the amendment, the change on the second sentence of the bullet on the top of the second page to change the word have after members to the word of.
Second.
Motion being made in second, any further discussion? All those in favor?
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Discussion impossible, vote, we got an amendment to the fire capital allocation from 285256 to 284006, as voted at the January meeting.
So this is a correction because it was voted on as.
It said police last time.
Right, it needed to say fire. So it's just a ministerial correction.
Yeah, it's just, any questions? Can I have a motion?
Oh, okay, I move that we approve the amendment to the fire capital allocation from 285,000, 256 to 284,000,006. As voted at our January 19, 23 council meeting.
Dennis?
I second.
Okay. Motion's been made in second.
Oh, is he gonna move?
No, no, he wants to second it. Motion being made in second.
He said you haven't taught him long enough.
Motion's been made in second, all those in favor? Town clerk, discussion possible vote on resolution regarding special election for Charter Review Commission, Joan.
Yes, this is the resolution we need to have approved by the council to move forward with a July 18, 2023 special election for the Charter Review Commission.
Any questions? We discuss this.
Yes, the board of campuses have been notified. So once they have this resolution, they can move forward with plans with the state to hold a special election.
Any questions? I entertain a motion.
I move that we approve the resolution regarding special election for Charter Renew Commission for, do we have to put the date, July 18, 23?
Do I have a second?
A second.
Motion being made in second, any further discussion? All those in favor? Discussion, oh, here we go, the donation. Discussion possible vote on the proposed amendment to the Tibbeton Code of Ordinance, Chapter 66, Solid Waste Management, Article 3, Collection and Disposal, Recycling and Landfill Regulations Regarding Allowable Locations for Donation Containers, Continued from 213, 2023, it's in front of us. Any questions or discussion?
Chairman President?
Yes.
I think this accounts for everything that we had discussed at the last meeting to make modifications to. It would limit the sighting of the bins to the recycle center with being able to access them during normal operations. And then would not allow any bins elsewhere, would have an exception if there's a thrift store associated with a place of worship. And then only in containers clearly marked for donations to that store and in eyeglass donation boxes, which I believe we have one in North Tibbeton.
Any further discussion? I entertain a motion.
Just, oh, just one thing. So we've got eyeglasses, thrift stores, are there any other donation boxes that they're going to say, well, what about me?
The only, do we?
Do you have flags?
No, we don't have flags.
Yes, no, we do, but it's at the police station.
And how about, we talked, when I was reading this, we talked books. That's not, that wasn't really a donation.
I believe there is a book bin at the VFW.
There is. I checked it out after we talked about it, it is on their property.
So that wouldn't be allowed? Okay, there are, there are, there are little private.
Living libraries, right?
That's what it's called, and there's one at Grinnell's, but that's.
You wanna hear, is it over there?
There might be, but there's one at Grinnell's Beach, there's definitely one at Grinnell's.
I think there's four or five.
But that's totally different.
Because you take, you give and take.
You give and take, yes.
They're very small.
Oh, yeah, they're just a box. And I actually was, I was actually walking the beach the other day and I saw two elderly women come and they put books in and took books out. So I think it's a really, it's a very cool idea.
Are you concerned about that, Deb?
I just don't want to do this and then somebody says, well, what about this? You know, I just don't want to.
If people want to donate books, the library takes them.
So what is that whole book box? We don't even know who dropped that off, right? We don't know where they take those books or.
The VFW may know, but we don't even know that. Yeah, well. Yeah, but if book donations are accepted at the library and like I said, if you really want to put some in that box and take others, that's a really, I think it's a very good idea. It's a good way to recycle forward and.
Yeah.
All right.
Make a motion to approve the ordinance as amended from the original, which is before us.
Okay. Motion being made in second, any further discussion? All those in favor? DPW Director, we gotta get him going because it's gonna snow. I'm on a timeline. Discussion impossible, vote to approve funds to advertise for Fogland Point Stormwater Improvements as per GZA A Plan and its specifications.
Yes, yes, thank you Denise. This issue has come up before when they were designing it. Now they're getting ready for the construction phase. Does anybody have any questions?
Rick, how's your eyesight?
Well, it depends.
You know why he's asking?
No, I can't see that.
Well, yeah, I can't see it here.
That's what you gave it to us. When I saw it, I was like, he's kidding, right?
No, it's all the notes and everything, I get that.
I mean, people need to see this.
I get, it's all the notes and everything and.
It's fine, we're just teasing you.
That's okay. I do this, Mike, I print it on 11 by 17.
But it's still small.
You don't tell us that way.
Okay, any questions?
And you may remember, there is a grant match on this.
Yeah, I might just ask about this, so. Where's the funds, oh, funds to advertise? Yeah, to advertise.
So we do want obviously the necessary funds to advertise it, but the town council did approve a while ago some matching funds.
Yep. All right, I like to entertain a motion.
I move that we vote to approve funds to advertise for the Fogland Point Stormwater Improvement as per GZA plans and specifications.
Second.
Motion being made in second, any further discussions or questions?
I would, I would say if I may Denise, that we don't know what the bids are gonna come in at, you know, for dollar value, so it's based on predictions. If something comes up, then we'd have to go back to Chris and find out.
We'll adjust it accordingly, I'm sure.
Probably gonna need adjustment.
Yeah, and we already approved it, so it's just a matter of adding if we need to.
Thank, thank you.
All those in favor? Rick, you're on again. Discussion possible vote to allocate funds for landfill capping project expected and potential cost overruns.
Yes, this is just to try to keep people abreast of the different changes that are going on over there in relation to possible and expected and known cost overruns. Does anybody have any questions on this?
I've got one. Why are we paying for the duck bank?
See.
Power is a good question.
Yes, exactly.
So first of all, we haven't agreed to put the duck bank in yet. All right, it's a potential issue. The tower that sits off the northeast corner of that property has an easement for the utilities to get to that tower. We've determined during the landfill closure that those power lines and communication lines are not in the easement. And we've been fighting with a firm that we have the lease for and. And we've been fighting with a firm that we have the lease for, and I actually have those records here to go through again this week, Rick. But, so we've proffered to them that it would be, prove them to go up the existing road that we're building to the tower now and put duck banks in so that we would know exactly where they are. And they would know where they are for the future. The issue is, they thought that they could just rip the membrane open if there was an issue and just, but they can't. And they were trying to tell us that we shouldn't be closing the landfill, that we shouldn't be capping it, and they've come up with every excuse in the sun, but they have not agreed to identifying where the existing lines are now. Because they are not in duck banks. They're only in conduits. And the conduits have either moved or they were never installed in the proper easement to start with. One of the things that we're gonna be researching, and like I said, I don't think that that item is up for approval tonight because we're not anywhere near a resolution to this. But we, yeah, we're trying to keep apprised of what's going on. The, I want to find out exactly when the lease is due on this, because they've been anticipating that they would like to see a lease extension. Which, you know, obviously at some point we're gonna have to deal with that, but I also don't want to be bent over or held up, you know, to some standard that we shouldn't be held to where the town is made responsible for something that they should take on themselves. So we've identified as an issue. The ones that we really know that are, we have some cost overruns that we know. We had some rock removal. We had some fills that had to be brought in. There's an issue of a perimeter fence that was never in the original specs. There was a limited amount of fencing. I would say probably a tenth of what's needed. But once we started and the membrane was put on, we found that there were four wheelers going up there. So we're gonna have to find some methodology to resolve this. I'll be meeting with Chief Jones this week with our friends from USDA. We're hopeful that we can find a funding source for all of this. And if we do ultimately decide to do the duck banks because the funds come in that way, that we would hold that against the lease of any, for the lease of that property. But at least we would, I have an identifying known where they are for the telecommunications and electric. So, you know, there are some savings that we did generate. Of the 300,000 that we know of today, there's about 80,000 in savings. We've, you know, obviously the contract was for 11.4 million. Par was another half a million. We anticipated that, it's not budgeted and we never allocated any money for, but about another half a million in contingencies. We'll be coming back to you after, you know, we get some hard numbers with the treasurer as to where we actually stand. And we'll be either looking at using some gaming monies or American recovery monies to come up with a shortfall, but really, we weren't anticipating this duck bank issue. And the fencing is really something a little bit more staggering than I thought it was going to be. But, so we have some issues that we're trying to resolve and wrestle with. We definitely want to get some hard and fast numbers so that you could make an intelligent decision when that time comes. But we're right now not asking for any particular monies. We just wanted to bring it up to speed.
And if I may add to what Chris has said, the, the duck bank, as you said, unknown, we're still awaiting the bid on that.
Correct.
The fence, it's a little bit of unknown because we don't know the exact length when they install it. We'll know because it depends on what they have to go around and any obstacles. But the price is, is firm, and you're looking at the price times the anticipated length is 300,000. You might save 10,000, 20,000. You might go over 10 or 20,000 when you actually measure the fence. But, but that number is pretty set, except for the length. The, the duck bank, that's just a DPW approximation because we've been waiting quite a while actually for their estimate.
So we don't need to vote on anything, Rick?
Can I just ask though?
Go ahead.
Exactly what is an electric duck bank? Is it like the encasement around?
But, thank you Deb for the question. The duck bank is actually the concrete and the conduit and whatever cable is in it.
So as today, the current bank is conduit, but it's not in anything that's stable. So it can move with, with the landfill, or it could have been put in the wrong place altogether. If, when you, we're talking about doing duck banks from the solar farm all the way to Fish Road, they would cut open the road, they, they make a hole, they put in the ducts, the actual conduits, and then they cement around them. So that, so they stay right there. So those conduits never move. And they make accessible manholes so you can actually pull from certain areas.
So, so if you have this cement all around it so it doesn't move, what if it breaks?
You put in, you put in many of them. You put in more than what you need so that you have excess capacity.
And so that you can access them?
So you can either access it or you can add more, more.
And it does help protect that, all the conduit, so in case anybody is excavating in the area of the duck bank, they hit concrete. That's, when you hit that with a backhoe and excavator, you have a lot more safety cushion. If you hit conduit, it breaks.
So this is gonna go from the existing road into the landfill about where the power meter used to be?
It, it's anticipated to go, when you come off a main road and you head east, and then the road jogs to the north, gonna go, that's where the overhead stops. So it's anticipated to go from there all the way to the antenna.
You don't need a vote from us tonight.
Yeah, we just wanted to bring up the date.
Thank you.
Thanks. Thank you, Rick.
Thank you.
Council President, Dean Dearest, Council Vice President, Burke, discussion possible vote to hire firm to conduct forensic audit of school department expenditures, all revenues and all related policies and procedures related to spending, purchasing and revenue. Mike?
Thank you, Madam President. I'm gonna just give my perspective on why I think this is important. Certainly, we always have an audit done every year of the town and the schools, and that audit is your, what I'll call in, our treasurer there. Is there, she can correct me. It's kind of your basic audit of a council, of a town, to make sure you're spending what you need to spend, bringing in the revenue and making sure you're not going around generally accepting accounting rules. Is that a good nutshell? Yeah.
And make sure our balances.
And balance.
Picture at a point in time.
Yeah, picture at a point in time. A forensic audit is, is more detailed. It really looks into the specific expenditures, almost invoice by invoice, line by line, to see how things are being spent, whether they're being spent in accordance with the policies and procedures around revenue, around spending, around purchasing guidelines and the like. And a couple of reasons that I think this is important right now. One is, we've had the school committee superintendent before us for the discussions on the gaming money and the like and for other reasons. And we've addressed some practices around purchasing that I certainly am not happy with and others aren't happy with. And even when we've identified those, it seems that they come back in a different manner sometimes. So I think that's one piece. I think it's also important for me to say that this is not about pointing fingers at the school committee, at the superintendent. At the same time, there are some rumors out there about, oh, well, they're spending money on this. And I'm not even gonna say what those things are because rumors are rumors. It's not a fact until it's proven. That's part of what an audit can do. It can prove or disprove some of what's hanging out there in the, in the ethersphere, the ether.
That'll work.
Yeah, whatever.
I don't even know what you're talking about. Yeah.
Ether.
Out there in social media. So, you know, it's really, I think will help, you know, if, my assumption is that there's nothing to be found. And that'd be great. And it should put to bed some of those rumors, all of those rumors, I would hope, and let us all move forward. The other piece is, we as a council have a greater fiduciary responsibility, starting with this budget. We, you know, in the past, the budgets always went to the voters in some way, shape or form, either through the old financial town referendum or through the financial town meeting before that. That could happen, but it's not as likely for it to happen, is my sense, in the new manner. And at the same time, we approve the budget. And by the end of June, this council will have done our due diligence and come forward with a budget that we think is best for the town and for the schools. Could voters put another proposal out? Yes, they could. But again, we still have that fiduciary responsibility. It's a higher fiduciary responsibility, I think, than what we have had up until this point. So with that, I think it comes our responsibility to start off with some good information around the school budget so we can move forward.
Everything that Mike said. And all, and I, one of the most important things is, the charter has not changed, and we are responsible for telling the voters, this is what we think the school department needs. And I need to be, I, I need to be sure that I know all the numbers, that I make sure all the procedures are being done correctly. We are not accusing anyone of anything, but there are a lot of rumors out there, a lot of unhappy people out there, and I really think that this will put some of this to bed. And I also think, as Mike mentioned, some of their bidding processes we've had a problem with, and those are the ones that we know. It's not that we have a problem with it. It's against the law to not go out for bid. It's against the law not to do your due diligence. It's also, all the contracts that have been approved, they have a responsibility to do a fiscal impact, which has not been done. And a lot of the parents have said to me they have no idea what these contracts are. So I just think, and I think that the school department has nothing to hide, and we'll prove it, and we'll move forward, and we'll be confident that what we're telling the voters we all need is appropriate. And that's why me and Mike discussed it and decided this was the best way to do it. We've talked to them, so I don't think they're very surprised that we have decided to do this. Mike, Mike has talked to them. I have not. Any questions from the council?
No, I'll just make a comment along those lines. The town is basically a $54 million business, and we sort of serve as the board of directors. It is not uncommon or unusual for an audit of a business's finances to be done. We've decided it needed to be done, so this isn't something that we just plucked out of a hat. It's not unusual. It's not abnormal.
There was one other thing. If you look at our budget, our whole budget, the school department right now, we figured out, just for the general expenses, it's about 56 to 58% of the entire budget. Then when you look at the school bonds, which come onto our capital, and you add that in, and then you add the casino money, and we just gave them 2 million, the school department is getting about 70%, somewhere around that, of, of the tax bill. And I'm not saying that they don't deserve it or need it, but I think we need to justify why this is happening. And I was on the school department. I was chairman of the school committee for eight years. I know the expenses they have, but I just want to make sure that the town understands it. Anybody else?
Oh, I understand. Just to, to increase the transparency of, of the whole process.
And I, I think in light of the new charter changes, we have some responsibility now to make sure that we're bringing forth a budget that we have confidence in. Any other questions?
So to play devil's advocate. People may say, well, why don't we do forensic on the municipal side?
You do. As you go through the budgetary process with the town side of the budget, you go through every line item, every operational aspect of how this town operates on the $18 million of the $56 million budget. There's not a scrutiny, everything is scrutinized, so you understand exactly how this town operates, because you make, have always made those recommendations as a town council. You've never done it with the school committee or the school board or the school administration because it was not part of your purview. It was always with the budget committee and the taxpayer and the school committee. Now the charter has changed, that responsibility is on the town council's platter to do a full understanding of what it is you're gonna be voting on for a budget for them. And without understanding, you know, forensic audit is synonymous with an operational audit. So as you do through the budgetary process with the town, every, you know, budget, budget commission, a boarding commission, town departments, you, you sit and go through every one of those. You ask every director, you know, pointed questions about how they operate. So you have a full-throated understanding, and everything we do is transparent. There's not a thing that we do that's not brought before the town council, that's not advertised properly, that's not vetted properly. And I'm not saying that the schools are or aren't doing that, but you've never had to have that responsibility in the past, where you do have that responsibility now.
Right, and the schools, I'm sure go, they go line by line.
They may, but we've never seen it.
But no, and we've not seen it at the budget committee level either.
Right.
So.
And could not get it.
So last point, and if I'm wrong on this, you tell me because I'm trying to remember your old days. We do have an asset in working with a forensic audit firm in our administrator who is a nationally recognized expert in forensic auditing. And was the president of the National Association.
I still am.
Still am. He still is. I wasn't sure. So I think that's a bonus for us. The other pieces, the, the president alluded to, I did speak with the school committee chair on, I don't know.
Saturday.
Saturday, I think it was. And then also I spoke with Deb Palace from the school committee on Thursday or Friday, and, you know, I, I did apologize to Deb. She said, well, I would have liked, you know, it would have been nice to get a heads up. I did say I had a bit of an excuse because I had a pretty significant case of COVID at the time, so I wasn't thinking fully all week long.
And I was away, so.
And Denise was away. But they both, you know, did they like seeing it on our agenda? Not necessarily, but after I talked with them about what we just described here, they seemed much more comfortable with it. And I, you know, I think they would like to make sure that things start off with a clear picture of what is and what isn't. And, you know, for some of the rumors that are out there, they'd like to put those to bed too.
If there's no further discussion, I entertain a motion.
Make a motion. We approve the hiring of a firm to conduct a forensic audit of school department expenditures, all revenues and all related policies and procedures related to spending, purchasing and revenue.
I have to go out for bid for this.
Second.
No.
So, let me look at that. I believe that you can use the master price agreement firm that does auditing.
I just wanted to.
As long as they do operational forensic audits.
Transparency.
Yeah, well, we'll have. We'll have to use the, the appropriate purchasing process, which could be through the master price agreement.
Correct.
Let's look at it again.
Okay. Motion's been made second. Any further discussion? All those in favor? Solicitor Marcelo, discussion impossible vote regarding permission zones for recreational marijuana, recreational marijuana retail. And we looked at this at the agenda meeting, this map, and that's why Mike brought it.
So thank you. As you know, the voters at the last election approved the ballot question which would allow the locate, which allowed the licensing of certain marijuana, retail marijuana, marijuana within the town of Tiverton. The state statute makes, makes a distinction between areas where they could cultivate, manufacture, laboratory test and/or retail sales. So those are the broad categories of what the state can license within the state of Rhode Island and will license. Now that the voters have approved that, this council has to decide in what zones they're going to allow those type of activities. So again, cultivation, manufacture, laboratory testing in our retail sales of marijuana, as you can see.
Could they be like all in one business?
It could be, but.
Are they like four separate licenses?
It could be. I don't think the rules and regulations have been finalized yet as how the state may license them, but I do think there's a probably a, and don't, don't quote me on this, but I think there's probably more of an effort to separate the businesses. In other words, the person who's testing the marijuana is not also selling it. So a testing facility is generally, you know, they send the marijuana out to make sure that it's a good grade and whatever it happens to be for medical purposes or whatever. And, but anyway, so what the council has to decide, and as you know, the zoning process is not, doesn't happen overnight. We've got to figure out how to amend our zoning code.
For real, retail shops only right now.
Well, it's up to you.
Because that's what it says on the agenda, retail shops.
Retail shops only, but we need to be thinking about the others as well.
Yeah.
So there was a general discussion about.
So, so there was a general discussion about limiting them in the general commercial zone only. And as you can see, that's red. And as you can see from this map, there are very few general commercial, and you may want to do that. There's here, I think this is where the gas station is proposed, Souza Road.
Yeah, in that area, yeah.
Down here.
At Stone Bridge.
Stone Bridge.
Stone Bridge.
Here down near the library?
Yes.
No, that is the library.
That is the library.
Oh, that is the library, oh.
So we don't want to sell marijuana at the library.
Okay, okay.
Isn't there another one up near the casino?
I think there's one more lot by the library.
Yeah.
I don't see any of the casinos.
Isn't there one on?
Yes, up by the casino.
No, I think that's a different commercial. What is that one?
Highway commercial.
Highway commercial.
How about over on the line?
I thought there was one right at the line.
Yeah, right there. What's that?
That's the TMS, that's the overlay, not the overlay, that's the Main Street.
Okay, so it's not commercial?
Traditional Main Street.
What's to the east of that?
The purple is industrial.
Okay, that's what it was.
That's all the park, right?
That's the park.
I'm trying to pull it up from here.
Yes, sir. And I don't, and we just need to begin the discussion, because...
I personally think it should be in commercial areas.
So I thought, maybe I didn't read this legislation properly, I did not know it included cultivation. And I bet you a lot of people didn't. So now, could we, since we have voted to allow this, must we also allow cultivation?
Yes.
And we prevent it?
The voters have voted for it, and the...
But the voters, did the voters vote for cultivation?
Yes, the question, the question was very clear.
I don't remember.
And the question, and the question was given to us by the state legislature. We didn't have any say to what we could put, but it included all those things, so...
So...
So what we're talking about right now is retail, you're correct, so the retail sales.
So I think what we, this is just a...
Just go home and think about it.
Go home, think about it, look at the map.
But as you can tell, general commercial is not a lot. And you surely, I mean, this is my opinion, it's not, which doesn't matter, but you're surely not gonna have a retail establishment in a residential zone, right? That's not gonna happen.
But how about the other commercial one?
Highway commercial.
Highway commercial, that's what color?
Purple.
No.
No.
Brown, at the top here. So here and here.
Joe, where is that other one? Oh, it's...
By VD.
So it is VD?
It's VD. It's Souza Road.
Souza Road.
Right, and then it goes south down to just...
Right here.
Past the...
It says VD and Souza Road. It's not...
There's 24. This is 24.
Yeah, that's all it goes. Oh, it comes down.
It comes down.
Near where the pizza place is.
Just past the pizza place.
Past the police. Oh, you could put it right near the police station.
Exactly.
Chief might like that.
I'm telling you, Patrick, it's that they could put it there.
You keep an eye on it, at least.
Again, I want you to be clear, it's, this is only assuming that a license is issued for Tivern. There's only gonna be 33 licenses, so, but you have to be prepared.
33 retail licenses.
Correct.
What about the other licenses?
I think, that I don't know. That's a good question.
Now, in my experience, from the one that's right near my house in the Far River Tivern line, it's not a bad idea to have it right off the highway also, because that's what happens there. They come off the highway, go in, and then they leave off the other side of the highway.
They don't, they're in a big, long line, they back up all the traffic.
Yeah, but they buy it and they leave, though. They're not, they're not coming into town. Oh, it's an awful place between that road and everything else.
Or you could, you know, you can consider the pedestrian-friendly district, which is, I'm just saying, that's a possibility, just saying, that's another...
Or the traditional Main Street.
Yeah, which is all this little area here. By the way, this is the most updated zoning map we've ever had, thanks to the clerk.
Well, would you consider rezoning Highway Commercial back to Souza Road again? That's another, you know...
That's another option.
The highway side of Souza Road.
Can we create a special zoning district?
Who?
For this purpose.
You could, but where would you put it?
I don't know, I could figure that out, but...
When I was in discussions with this, I like the commercial properties because of where they are.
Could be an industrial park, right?
No, that's not industrial park. That's industrial land, that's...
Industrial, I'm sorry.
That's all Fish Road.
It's all Fish Road to the highway.
That's not the park.
I'm sorry.
You could put it there.
The park right here?
Nope.
Yeah, it is.
This red is the park, is it not?
Yes.
Yeah, right here.
The red is.
Yeah.
We could do it in the purple zone, but you're talking Fish Road going all the way north.
Right on both sides. I mean, it's one side of Fish Road, yep.
One side of Fish Road.
One side of Fish Road.
Side of Fish Road.
Eagleville side.
All the way down.
So I'm not looking for an answer tonight, but I would take, it takes some time to go through the map, before we approach, it would start with us, it would go to the planning board for their input, consistency with the comp plan, and then it would come back to us after public notice.
So we'll put it on the next agenda and have a further discussion. Is that good with everyone?
So while it's not on the agenda tonight, you should also contemplate, you know, the growing it?
The growing it, so the testing, the growing, and the manufacture, cultivation and manufacture.
Industrial park.
Thank you.
Put something in there.
I know, I know. All right, thank you, Mike. Solicitor Marcelo, you're on again. Discussion possible vote regarding amended resolution 2022-0015, request of legislation modification of the Tivern Home World Charter as amended to include reference to House and Senate bills, H5016 and S0029.
So we were very proactive when the charter changes got approved on November 8th. Within 30, 20 days of that approval, we put a generic resolution asking the delegation to please put in legislation ratifying those amendments, which they did. At the time, when we voted on a resolution, we did not have the bill numbers. So this is a simple amendment to that original resolution that includes the bill numbers, which is H5016 and S29. So those are the two House and Senate bills that are currently making their way through the legislature to formally ratify those charter changes that were approved by the voters on November 8th.
The House version is before the House tomorrow night.
Tomorrow night, so...
So we need a...